Meeting call to order. Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Chapman.
Here.
Councilmember Clayton.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Here.
Mayor Moore.
Here.
Please stand for a silent prayer, moment of reflection. We will now slip the flag.
Congratulations to the flag. United States of America. To the people of the United States. On a nation under God and invisible, liberty and justice for all.
As complied with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 PL 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to Asbury Park Press, The Coaster, and The Star Ledger on January 16th, 2025, and posted on the bulletin board the same day. All notices are on file with the city clerk. I'm now going to turn it over to Mayor Moore for a quick announcement.
Yes, good evening, everybody. It's my honor and privilege to introduce you all to our new city manager, Mr. Adam Cruz, and I'd like to him to do a brief presentation about himself.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Council, I'm going to start off by actually thanking the council for allowing me to serve the residents of the city of Asbury Park. I am grateful for you giving me the opportunity, giving me the vote of confidence to be an employee of the city. I can, I have been in government, I'm going to address the public now. I have been in government now for about 33 years. I have served in several municipalities. Some of them is the city of Elizabeth, city of Newark, Perth Amboy, the city of Trenton, Dover, the town of Dover in Morris County, and now here. But I am excited. I look forward to being of great service to the community, to the residents, to the visitors, to council. And I hope that we have a long-lasting relationship full of achievements. And hopefully, we can move Asbury Park forward as it has been for the last couple of decades. And I hope to continue to make a positive impact in the city. So, thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. One quick thing on the tail end of the agenda is the second reading of the ordinance number 2025-14, Amendment to the Main Street Redevelopment Plan. That will be tabled tonight, so if there's anybody here waiting to talk about that, it's not going to be talked about. So, just let the public know that will be tabled tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. We're now on special event applications from Recreation Director Alicia Floyd.
Good evening, Mary Council. This evening, there are seven applications before you. Three of them are new. The first new one is the No Kings Rally. The second one is the Smoke Free Summer, which is a media event. And lastly, is the Nestle Ice Cream Giveaway. Are there any questions on any of the applications?
Is it planned for the 18th?
Yes, but that's a returning event.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, just addressed the new ones.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alicia. Moving on, we are now on to Mayor's from the City Council. Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes, I do. Good evening, everyone. I have several announcements. You just heard from our recreation director, and she is hitting the ball out of the park with some other activities for the summer. We have Saturdays from June 28th through August 2nd, swimming lessons for our youngsters. We also have the Summer Day Camp Program. And this is for current kindergarteners to current 7th graders. This begins June 30th, runs through August 8th, Monday through Friday, 12 noon to 4:30 PM. There are payment plans available until 6, well, 6:10. But anyway, all payments are non-refundable, so please bring exact amount. No child will be turned away, but you must show proof of living in the same household. Limited slots are available. And lastly, on the 13th, right here in the councilman's chambers, the city will be hosting a New Jersey Stay in New Jersey Senior Freeze Program. So, please be here at 1:00 PM. They will have a workshop. They will also have applications to assist you. You will need your 23 tax returns. And when I say "they," this is from the Office of Vin Gopal and Luann Peter Paul, Assemblywoman, and Assemblywoman Dr. Margie Donnelly. That's all from me. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Chapman.
I have nothing at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Clayton.
Good evening. Just wanted you to know that North Shore is coming back to Asbury Park. It's going to be here from June 14th through the 29th. And that means that all over the city, there are going to be all types of activities. Art, music, dance, anything you can think of. So, if you'll go to the N2S website, it will give you all the events that are happening throughout the city during that two-week period. Also, Juneteenth is coming up, and there will be a Juneteenth Festival in Springwood Park on June 21st from 12 to 6:00 PM. Again, it will be an event that is designed for the family, so please come out and celebrate Juneteenth with us. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Quinn. Thank you. Mayor Moore.
Nothing, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, Mayor's from the city manager. Anything additional?
No reports, thank you.
All right. And Mayor's from the city attorney.
I have nothing, thank you.
Thank you. We're now moving on to a presentation by the city's planning consultant, Beth McManus.
James.
There we go. Okay. I'm starting to get very nervous. Okay. Okay, folks. So, first, my name is Beth McManus. I'm the city's affordable housing and also redevelopment planner. But in this context, I'm here to talk about affordable housing. So, we have a housing plan that is going to be heard by the planning board in a couple of weeks from now. And so, this is really an overview of what's to come. And just for a little bit of context, the reason why municipalities in the state do this is generally for three reasons. First, we have a direction from our Supreme Court that this is a constitutional obligation to do so, to plan, make sure we have opportunities for folks of all incomes in our communities. The second is because in order to maintain protection from builder's remedy litigation, which is a type of land use litigation that is very detrimental to municipal zoning. Municipalities are tasked with then complying with the affordable housing laws in the state, which include, but are not limited to adopting a housing plan. And then last, but certainly not least, planning for affordable housing is also really helpful to communities that are interested in maintaining affordability, quality of life for the residents that exist now, as well as to come in the future. And so, what we mean when, or what I mean when I talk about affordable housing here in Jersey, it means something pretty specific in the sense that we have a set of income limits that have been adopted by the state that municipalities must abide by as they plan for and as developers build affordable housing. And up here, I have the income limits for the region that Asbury Park is located in. Each municipality is within a region, and then those income limits applicable to each town are based on the region's median income. And so, ultimately, it means that affordable housing is for households that have incomes that are 80% or less than the area median income. And then, there are some additional categories in there, such as moderate income, low income, and very low income. With moderate income being between 50 and 80% of median income, low income at 50% and less of median income, and then very low income is really just a subset of low income, in that it's 30% or less than median income. But ultimately, when we're talking about incomes, it really, as you can see from the chart, it essentially depends on the number of folks living in the house. As you can imagine, the more people living in the home, the higher the income is permitted in order to access affordable housing. And in Monmouth County, in this region, the incomes are really quite high in the sense that we have the top end for, let's say, a three-person household being about $97,000 a year. And that's a pretty significant income if you think about just one, maybe a parent and two children, or even two parents and one child, just as an example household. And then, that translates to the permitted rents. And these are just sample rents. It's going to depend on a few factors that are, that might be built into the lease. But ultimately, we're looking at, for example, a two-bedroom unit of rents between $600 and about $1,600 a month. But again, that's going to depend on the income level, whether you're very low income, low income, and moderate income. And additionally, just to, before we talk a little bit more about the plan, just for some context, there are a ton of requirements for affordable housing. And this really just scratches the surface. But I thought it would be interesting for folks to understand what municipalities are tasked with thinking about versus what developers and individual developments must comply with. And here in Asbury Park, as you'll hear from me in a little bit, what we are tasked with requiring, whether it's 50% family, maximum senior, et cetera, it has a bit of a different implication. But I think this information is still helpful because it is, it makes clear the type of housing policy that the state is trying to promote in the sense that they're looking for affordable housing to be largely available for families, for those households that not literally just have children, but are not restricted to maybe seniors or those with special needs, because we have a 50%, half of your affordable units, meeting your obligation, must be available for families. They also have a limitation on seniors. I mean, certainly, seniors need housing, but the state is looking to promote family housing, knowing that seniors can also occupy family units. It just might not be restricted to those, to those of those ages. And then, there's also a rental requirement as well, you know, making sure that there's affordable homes for rent in every community. But for each development, one of the, I think, one of the good things about our affordable housing rules, and also, one of the challenging parts, is the mix that's required in developments, in the sense that you have to have one, two, and three-bedroom units included in any, for any family project, for a project that's open to anybody. You've got to make sure you've got a minimum of, for example, 20% three-bedroom units, so that you can provide housing for folks with children. And then, you also have to make sure that there is a mix of incomes, even within the affordable units in that project. So, you can't, for example, have all of your affordable units be moderate income. Sorry about that.
Are studios never covered best?
Studios are really, it's studio slash one bedrooms. So, a studio unit is essentially the same as a one-bedroom. So, we've got to have a mix of incomes. You've got to have very low income, low income, and moderate income for a compliant affordable housing project. And so, as I started out, you know, we're talking about compliance, affordable housing from a compliance perspective. And so, what are the first couple of steps? First and foremost, we've got to identify that we're going to participate in the process, and that's actually been done months ago by this council. Council passed a resolution back in January to formalize their participation in the process. And so, the next step is to actually put that housing plan together and ultimately to submit it to the state. And the housing plan is due June 30th of this year. So, in this city, we have, we really have two different types of affordable housing obligations. And we're in a bit of an unusual circumstance here for two different reasons. So, first, our primary obligation, if you will, is actually our rehabilitation obligation. And that is based on a number that was, first, I should say, was calculated by DCA, Department of Community Affairs. And it represents an estimate of the number of low and moderate income households living in this city that are also living in substandard units. So, trying to capture that share of folks existing in the city that are, that have lower incomes and are really in deficient housing. And so, that figure for Asbury Park is 214. And for most other communities in the state, there's also something referred to as a new construction obligation. You might hear it in the newspaper for your first round, second round. We're into the fourth round now. But qualified urban aid municipalities, which Asbury Park is, are exempt from that obligation. So, we don't have a new construction obligation. We only have the rehabilitation obligation. But the third component, and the other reason why we are a bit unusual, is because we have an outstanding RCA obligation. The city took on some RCA contracts in many years in the past at this point. And some of those units, 206 of them, are still outstanding for various reasons. And so, as we think about what we are required to do for our housing plan, it's really two components. The first one is the rehabilitation component, and the second one is solving or fixing the outstanding RCA units. And as I talk about these two obligations, one of the things that I think is important to understand is that this housing plan is really about compliance with our state's affordable housing rules. Because one of the slides that I have not included are the significant numbers of zoning districts, redevelopment plans, and existing projects already in the city that provide affordable housing. There are, whether we're talking about private developers that have incorporated affordable housing into approved or constructed plans, or our housing authority, or our nonprofits here in the city. There is significant numbers of existing and already planned affordable housing. But this housing plan really is about providing compliance with the affordable housing rules, which are, for better or worse, limited to how are we meeting our rehabilitation obligation? And how are we solving our RCA issue? Those other policies, zoning districts, redevelopment plans, et cetera, those remain in place and are not disrupted, one way or the other, by this, by, sorry, by this housing plan. I think that means I'm talking too much, so I'll try to move forward. So, as I said, for our rehabilitation obligation, it's 214 units. And this is going to be satisfied, it'll be met, in actually the same way that the city's currently working, and that is to operate a rehabilitation program that will be open to, for sale, as well as renter-occupied units. And it's going to be administered by the city's existing affordable housing administrative agent, which is, their name is CGPNH, Community Grants, Housing and Planning. They're a great group that run rehabilitation programs all over the state, and they'll continue to do so here for the city. And as part of that program, it comes with 10-year affordability controls. And more specifically, what happens is, if you're, let's say, you're a homeowner, and you're in need of a major system being updated. So, think about in need of a new roof, in need of a new HVAC system, for example. If you are low and moderate income, so you're income-qualified, you would apply through CGPNH to receive, let's say, a new roof. And there would be a loan or a grant provided, rather, in exchange for deed restrictions. So, essentially, you demonstrate income qualification. CGPNH works with you to identify contractors that will install the new roof. The new roof is installed, and in exchange, essentially, there are 10 years of affordability controls placed on the unit. And that means that if the home is sold inside of the next 10 years, it simply must be sold at a lower price to another income-qualified family. So, it helps existing homeowners and landlords, to the extent that they apply as well for their tenants. It helps existing folks here in the city. And if those tenants or homeowners move on, it will help the next family who is also of lower moderate income. And so, that second component I described, which is addressing the RCA, the outstanding RCA units, we have an existing mechanism to do so. And this is through an agreement that we have, or a memorandum of understanding we have with the city's housing authority. And it also reflects a settlement agreement that the city has with Fair Share Housing Center. Both of these were executed in 2023. And for those of you that have been maybe following affordable housing, this might sound familiar, because I've given very similar presentations about this, I think, at the council, as well as the planning board in the past. And so, this project is really a continuation of what we've already adopted. But you'll see it again listed in our upcoming housing plan. So, ultimately, in order to address those outstanding RCA units, we have an agreement with the housing authority to work with them to essentially utilize the Lincoln Village Development and the Home Plate site, which you can see on the screen. For those of you that might not be familiar, the Home Plate property is the lawn area, so to speak, the green area, the southern part, or the bottom part of the photograph, undeveloped. And then, Lincoln Village, an existing housing authority property, is located just north of that. And we're really talking about the corner of Memorial and Springwood. And so, ultimately, what's planned is affordable housing will be developed on the Home Plate site, on the undeveloped portion. And that will provide an opportunity, yes, for affordable housing, but more specifically, for existing residents of Lincoln Village to move to those new homes, because the next phase is to actually demolish Lincoln Village and replace that with new housing. And so, ultimately, this will result in a few different outcomes. First is, we'll be able to comply with the state requirements in our settlement agreement to address those outstanding RCA issues. It will also create more affordable housing in the city to advance those earlier goals about affordability, quality of life, et cetera. And three, it will also provide improved housing for the residents of Lincoln Village. And so, with the continuation of our rehabilitation program and with the, with working with the housing authority to complete the terms and the program set forth with the MOU for the Lincoln Village and for the Home Plate property, the city will be able to demonstrate compliance with its affordable housing obligation and with the affordable housing rules. And so, our next steps, as I said at the outset, is to have our housing plan adopted by the planning board. It's actually a master plan element. And so, the planning board is actually the group that is required to adopt the plan. And that's currently scheduled for June 30th. After that, it's a task to have all of this documentation submitted to the court. It's referred to as the Program, or the Affordable Housing Dispute Resolution Program. That's the new organization of folks that will review our housing plan and hopefully, issue a compliance certification, which is essentially our stamp of approval from the state that the city's housing plan meets that rehabilitation obligation, and it satisfies our RCA, our outstanding RCA issues. And so, with that, that's a pretty brief overview of the housing plan. Admittedly, it's relatively simple, because we just have the rehabilitation obligation and that RCA, the RCA units for which we've already established how that will be done back in 2023. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Let me, just hold on one second. Quite a few people walked in late, so you missed some opening statements. Number one, our new city manager, Mr. Adam Cruz. And number two, the second reading of the ordinance 2015-14, Amendment to the Main Street Redevelopment Plan, will be tabled tonight. There will be no action taken on that issue tonight. So, if you're here to talk about that, there will be no talking about it. Thank you. Now, go ahead, yeah.
We're now on to public participation. May I have a motion to open the meeting to the public?
Move it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public participation portion of the meeting is now open. Any member of the public who wishes to speak, please use the microphone, state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes. There'll be a three-minute time limit for each speaker.
Hello. Hello. My name's Frank Kuchinata, 209 Sixth Avenue. I want to thank Mayor Moore for allowing us to present, have a meeting with us regarding the Infrastructure Improvement Plan. We met, and we haven't had gotten any response from that yet. So, I don't know if that's something that's in the works or what, but would like to know about that, as well as, still a little concerned regarding the public notification. It seems like there should have been some public notification, and none of the residents in the 200-foot area surrounding that were notified. We're concerned also, again, about the back-end angled parking that's planned. And that, you know, is a serious concern, because you're going to have the exhaust from the cars going into the houses and porches that are already there, which is not a very healthy thing for the existing residents. So, I don't know if anyone else is aware of that, but that's a serious concern. The other thing is, we learned that you're going to be, the plan is going to be replacing the eight-foot grassy aprons with pavers. And granted, the pavers are supposed to be permeable, but they're only permeable if they're maintained properly. And there needs to be some sort of maintenance program that allows for the vacuuming of those pavers two to four times a year and after major storms. Otherwise, the sand and the dirt settle into those pores and render that permeable asphalt or pavers inoperable. So, it's useless if it's not maintained properly. Whereas, if you leave the grass in place, the grass doesn't need the maintenance of, you know, vacuuming periodically and after storms. And it also gives the dogs a place to go. The dogs aren't going to go on the semi-p permeable pavers. They need grass to go on. So, they were the main points that I wanted to reiterate from our conversation and a discussion about a week ago.
Okay. Thank you. And last week, I saw emails going back and forth. I don't, were you copied one of those? Because I did see a chain of emails going from, I'm going to say, Steve Clark, to people that were at the meeting. Were you on those?
I was not on them. Otherwise, I, we'd had a different discussion.
Because, yeah, you, not you, the people with you, everybody wanted a copy of the plan. So, I saw that was sent. John, can you make sure that he gets sent a copy tomorrow?
Thank you.
Okay. Apologize, don't know how you were left out.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Nina Sumlin. I reside at 1101 Bangs. I'm also a commissioner for the Asbury Park Housing Authority. And my question will probably go to Beth more than anybody, because I was wondering if there's a timeline for the development for Lincoln Village? Like, what's the process, where we are, like, with those ideas, where we're moving forward, that type of thing? So, is there any way that you can kind of give us the leading info on that? Or are we just going to wait to the next board or a meeting, or a city council meeting to find out for sure?
I think it's a question for both sides. I mean, the housing authority signed an MOU in June of 2023.
Yes.
You've never revoked it, so we're saying, like, that MOU should be still in play. But it seems like, I guess, the commissioners, the administration wants to change the MOU, but you guys have never voted to change it.
Right.
So, we're in a quandary, like, it's kind of more in your ballpark than ours.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you. Linda Brophy, 407 Sixth Avenue. I guess I have concerns and questions regarding the infrastructure on Kingsley and Sixth and Seventh Avenues, more so for the fact of bicycles. I know that the town's gotten very good at getting, you know, up to par with having bicycle lanes and keeping us safe. But I ride up to the beach, and the way that the curbs are set up, the aprons are extended, and I was told it was supposed to be to, I guess, slow down drivers, which I didn't think was a problem, but... guess, slow down drivers, which I didn't think was a problem, but regardless, thank you for that. But I don't see where or how a biker or someone on a bicycle headed to the beach is, it's a very narrow pathway for a car to pass through, let alone now, where does the bicyclist go? Does anyone know that here, or is there someone I can go to to find out? Or where is the bike lane going to be on the streets once you change it, per what Frank's statement and stuff was?
Go ahead.
If there's no designated bike lane, the bike has a full lane, so I'll subway answer for that.
James, do you have to say, do you want to say?
The bike has a full lane with the car?
Yes.
It's shared.
State law.
Well, I think that's a little dangerous.
It'll have a shallow on the space, but it doesn't mean that bicycles can be in that full lane. And bicycles do have the right to use the full travel lane on those roads.
Okay. Do you realize that I find that is going to be extremely dangerous, the way it's set up? I mean, it's gotten so much, or so busy at the beach on Sixth and Seventh Avenues, and, you know, to trust a car to understand that rule, you know, I'm just saying, I feel a little concerned about that.
We'll have a lot of signage out, bicycles may use full lane, corporate passing law signs, we're adding them in now also. It's, that is how the legislature runs, but we will try our best to make sure the restriets are out there in progress as well.
And, and the bike lane on Sixth Avenue where, I guess you're going to do angled parking now, is my understanding, is the bike lane on the inside path or still just?
No, it'll be too narrow for a bicycle lane. It will be a shallow lane between Webb and Kingsley.
I'm sorry, what kind of?
It's a shallow, it's the, it's the center of the lane, it needs to share the space, the shared out.
Oh, okay. All right. I, I guess that's all it will be, but thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Alexandra Wright, and I live at 607 First Avenue for the last 37 years. And two years ago, we got a bill of $2,400 for the sewer. We were told that that's being back billed because we were supposed to be paying $80 per unit. We have, excuse me. So the letter indicated that there were changes made that affected our current bill, and there needs to be an increase of $80 per, per each meter unit. We have not made any changes to our water meter, nor did we add any other water meter. We have tried to speak to different officials at City Hall, but we were unable to get a clear answer besides this is the new ordinance to bill by the house units. Each person gave the same answer each time. I reviewed the ordinance, but it only refers to new construction and if the meter was previously disconnected and reconnected within the past 10 years. We actually have been the owners of this house for the last 37 years. And I reviewed this ordinance. It said, it specifically states connection fees and a permit would be required. We never had any kind of updates like that done to the, to our home. There is only one meter and always has been. We're solely responsible for the water and the sewer bills. We're very careful with the usage of water, and our average bill is $65 to $70 a month. It seems very strange to me that the average water bill is $210 per three months, but we paying the sewer $240 additional besides the amount we pay for the water usage. So I understand it's very expensive to maintain the sewer plant, but I really feel that we're being penalized for, for being here so long. We're retired, we're hoping to be able to enjoy a changing town in their retirement. We find it extremely disappointing on how many contractors have been able to negotiate with us, with you, to avoid paying taxes for over 10 years, and we're left to carry the burden of increased taxes. Incentives were given to bring the town back to life, but for long, for how long are the, are we, the taxpayers, have to sustain the newcomers? It seems to me that the more money this town generates, the more they come up short for the budget. Is there something wrong with that picture? We would respectfully request to have the back billing removed and stop billing us for the additional $160 per quarter. We will happily pay the $80 increase for the one water meter and the usage of meter. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Hello, Matthew Allen, Executive Director, Asbury Park Chamber of Commerce, 1011 Main Street. I wanted to start by welcoming our new city manager. I look forward to working with you. And I also want to thank the city council and the city for the support of Asbury Fest this past weekend. Despite the weather, we still had a great time. I know a few of you were there. I want, I want to say a special shout out to DPW for all the great work they did, keeping the park clean for us, the Asbury Park Police Department, the Asbury Park Fire Department being there and being such a great help. It was, it was still a great event despite our little bit of rain over the weekend. So thank you for your support for this event, and I look forward to your support again next year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Whatever date you pick, Mac, it rains. I mean, whatever.
Welcome to a completely different topic here, sorry.
Yeah.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Paul McEvelie, Interfaith Neighbors. Thank you for arranging for this evening's presentation on affordable housing. Thank you, Beth, for a very informative presentation. And I'm just wondering, does the city maintain an Affordable Housing Trust Fund at the city level as distinct from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund at the state level? That's question number one. And number two, is it possible to get a resolution of support from the council and mayor for an application at the state level for Affordable Housing Trust Fund access, which is a requirement of the application?
I can confirm that, yes, the city does have an Affordable Housing Trust Fund. The city collects development fees and third-party debt.
As far as the letter, send me an email, what, what you need, and we'll go from there.
Great. Thanks very much, Mr. President.
Thank you. Anyone else that is not motion?
Hello, my name is Stephen Wright. I live at 607 First Avenue. I just wanted to bring and add to what she was saying, is that there's a schedule made, I don't know if you guys are aware of it, but this schedule is called the Sanitary Sewer Service Charge Schedule Two. Now, I don't think if you guys already have, familiar with this as schedule. Now, this schedule has been mod, is modifying the, the state-built ordinance by telling, giving this to people and telling them that, that shall each be billed a demand charge equal, equal to the charge imposed for a 5'8" water meter, including, and not, now, what they're saying is that every, of every house that's been a three-family house or a four-family house will have to pay, per apartment, $80. If, if you have one meter. This doesn't make so much sense. And this is not a, a legal, this is from the, the bill, the Senate bill in Chapter 18 of 2008, which is the 1274 in 2018. That was a bill for this, from the Senate, for the sewer ordinance. And I don't understand why the sewer department is telling people, regardless if you have one meter or two meter, you have to pay. So same thing, if someone, if, if, if the hotel has five apartments in there, or, say, 10 apartments, and they got to pay, like, say, $16,000 for a six-inch pipe, and then be billed for every single apartment they they have in there at $80. So that's, so does that make sense? I don't understand.
John, do you know more about this?
Yeah, basically, I, I talked to the, the tax assessor, and, so this is based off tax, okay? So this is based actually off your three units, not one. So it's $80 per unit, you have three units, and that's why they're doing that.
No, I have a one, I, I, I have a family house, okay? And this here, the, the, the state, the Senate Bill ordinance states, one meter, one sewer, one, one charge.
Send me what you have, and I'll look into it.
I send this to you.
All right, so I say.
This is what the, the sewer department was given to everybody.
Yeah, that's.
Okay? And, and if you look at the, on chapter, at chapter 18 of the ordinance, this was, this is the state ordinance, this was written to law, and it does not say what this, this year's schedule is talking about.
So what I got from our, our tax collector, okay, was that it's based off of the three units. So that's, that's what we got.
John, can you just send us an email? Can you just send us an email just so we understand what they're talking about?
Actually, I'll, I'll, I'll forward everything.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're now on to the minutes from May 28th, regular executive session. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Moving on to individual resolutions. I have Resolution 2025-292, Resolution approving payment of bills.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2025-293, Resolution authorizing the purchase of emission and group packages needed for the 2025 summer day camp program and 2025 Police Athletic League summer camp in an amount not to exceed $125,000.
Move it.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2025-293, Resolution authorizing the purchase of emission and group packages needed for the 2025 summer day camp program and 2025 Police Athletic League summer camp in an amount not to exceed $125,000.
Move it.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2025-294, Resolution authorizing payment for two emergency bypass pump rentals needed at the wastewater treatment plant.
Move it, Mayor.
Do I have a sec?
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2025-295, Resolution amending the contract with short point architecture.
Wait a second. It said 295.
Yeah.
It was the rentals for the sewer plant.
Yeah, that was for the sewer plant.
Was it a pass?
It passed.
Yes.
That's my answer. You wrote 295, you wrote 294. My bad. Side converses.
Okay. Resolution 2025-295, Resolution amending the contract with short point architecture for services at the new fire department headquarters.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
No.
Mayor Moore?
No.
Resolution 2025-296, Resolution authorizing the city of Asbury Park to implement the competitive contracting process to procure vendors to operate a valet parking service concession.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2025-297, Resolution authorizing the city of Asbury Park to implement the competitive contracting process to procure vendors to operate vending machine concession.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2025-298, Resolution awarding a bid for the transportation of liquid sewage sludge.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2025-299, Resolution adopting the Monmouth County Home Castorium fiscal year 2025-2029 consolidated and 2025 annual action plan for housing and community development block grant program.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2025-300, Resolution approving a liquor license with special conditions for Porta at Asbury Park LLC doing business as Porta for the 2025-2026 licensing year.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
I have a question. What are the special conditions?
The blues are listed.
It's, it's here.
They're listed in the.
To paraphrase, Friday nights are getting reduced because they stopped the club. Saturday nights remain. Maybe.
Reduced from six to four.
Yeah, okay. Reduce the size of the drinks, and soft drinks. Cleaning up around this, around the building.
They have to hire.
After. Club nights.
And they have to maintain video, their video surveillance for a certain number of days in case police need to go back and revisit any of that.
Okay, thank you. And putting in new cameras. Thank you. Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2025-301, Resolution approving a liquor license renewal with special conditions for Steinbach Liquor License LLC doing business as Asbury Ale House, Lola's Cafe, and Main Stay for the 2025-2026 licensing term.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2025-302, Resolution approving 2025-2026 alcoholic beverage control license for House of Independence LLC in the city of Asbury Park, County of Monmouth, New Jersey.
Move it, yes.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2025-303, Resolution authorizing the appointment of city public defender. The appointee is Donald Greer Jr., Esquire.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2025-304, Resolution authorizing the appointment of alternate public defenders. The appointees are Lawrence Latrell Esquire and Anthony Cherry Jr., Esquire.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2025-305, Resolution authorizing deposition of surplus property.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?